We selected a consultant, E and G consultant, assessment of city-owned facilities for us. They provided discreet reports. A lot of our reports are bundled by property. So, for instance, this building doesn't have its own report. It's part of the Civic Hall, City Hall report. So, the parking lot, the garage, City Hall and Civic Hall, four pieces of property aren't a single site. And so, we've got fewer than 54 reports, but roughly that many structures and facilities that were assessed. In addition, we added McMinnville Water and Light to the contract. And at McMinnville Water and Light's cost, they had their own facilities assessed. I'll only be talking about city-owned and operated facilities tonight and not all of them. The intention of this work session is to really have the first public assessment or public unveiling of the high-level numbers and issues that were identified in the assessments to try to put some context around the assessment and to talk about some of our future steps that we'd like to take. I think you have all seen this graphic. Before I explain it to you, I'm going to sort of back up a little bit and talk about the work of the firm that assessed the facilities. And then, I'm going to dissect this document. So, we'll come back to it in its entirety a little bit later. The facilities assessment was a pretty comprehensive review. Each report includes an executive summary, key findings. There's this thing called the Facility Condition Index, which I'll explain a little bit more in future slides. We looked at ADA accessibility. We looked at seismic issues for some of our facilities, but not all of them. And we've got the opinions of probable costs. I'm going to talk a little bit about just the pieces of the work. Each report is very detailed. There's a lot there. Tonight, what the detail you'll see is really illustrative and example. We're not trying to kind of quantify everything to you. Talk a little bit about the Facility Condition Index. It's essentially one of the ways to provide an objective indication about a building's overall condition and relates to both the needs of the facility as well as the replacement value of the facility. Each of our facilities was assigned a Condition Index, whether new and well-maintained, subject to wear but serviceable, subjected to hard or long-term wear and end-of-useful or serviceable life. And beyond that, the deficiencies and all the life cycle needs for all the facilities were identified. And we've come up with immediate three-year, five-year, 10-year and 20-year investments that need to be made in the facilities as they stand now. We looked at a variety of types of improvements. Excuse me, they're identified as planned types in the report. And it's sort of not so important to understand the definition of planned types, but to look at the type of improvements that were assessed. Safety, performance and integrity, accessibility, environmental needs, retrofit, adaptation and life-cycle renewals are the big categories. So, this isn't a bad news report. There's a significant need in the organization, the community. So, I'm going to try to make sure that I stay there. One of the pieces of good news is that while there are a number of immediate needs of our facilities, they're relatively small needs related to safety and accessibility and environmental needs. So, the bulk of the condition assessment work shows up on this pie chart. It's a little bit hard to read, but the giant blue segment, about 3/4 of the pie, are related to the life-cycle, long-term use of the buildings. And so, most of the improvements are you need to fix a roof when you need to fix the roof. You need to replace a heating system when you need to replace a heating system. You need to upgrade plumbing when you need to upgrade plumbing. And there are relatively few safety, environmental and accessibility needs for the facilities. Now, we'll sort of break down that big graphic a little bit and tell you how we got where we are. We launched this effort last year prior to the strategic plan being approved. But by this time last year, we had a pretty good sense of what our strategic initiatives were going to be. And we relied on that draft strategic plan work to really inform that conversation. And we really focused on the issue of core services. As we worked our way through the strategic priorities, it's apparent to me, and I believe this to be the case, that at least four of our strategic priorities either influence or influenced by this facilities assessment. In addition to capacity, our ability to be a safe and resilient community, our ability to provide services that promote economic prosperity and engagement and inclusion are all influenced in one part or another by the facilities through which we provide our services. And so, as we look forward into the process, what we need to do is to be able to tell our story. We need to effectively plan. And we need to figure out how to fund our needs. And we're talking primarily about facilities, but we've got fleet and equipment needs as well. Those are the other significant components of the city's capital budget. And so, while we're going to spend most of our time talking tonight about facilities specifically, keep in mind that we've got these other capital resources called fleet and equipment that we'll need to talk about as well. And so, when we broke up the buildings at the executive team level, we tried to look at do they fit neatly or semi-neatly into categories? It's sort of bubbly because it's not all completely neat. But we have a cadre of facilities that are relatively new and relatively good condition. And preventive maintenance is really the key to keeping and maintaining those buildings to be functional. And/or there are facilities that may have their own revenue stream, like the water reclamation facility. And so, we think that these facilities that are identified really are those facilities that we just need to be diligent and consistent about making investments in those properties as we need to do that. Just as an example of that, I picked the condition assessment for the police department. It's a big building, 35,000 square feet. It's relatively new, just over 10 years old. And when we look at the immediate, short-term, near-term, midterm and long-term, there are significant costs associated with that building. But a number of those medium-term and long-term costs will change if you're effective in spending the money immediately and near-term. And so, for a building of its size and if its age, relatively few immediate and short-term needs for that. We've got sort of a big lumpy middle. Facilities that we are pretty committed to for a variety of reasons, but there are significant needs. And we need to really figure out effectively how we're going to invest in and improve those facilities. The example I picked this time was the library. So, it's an older building when compared to the police department, built in 1981. It's about half the size. And when you look at the immediate and short-term needs, they're significantly higher for that building than they are for the police department, for instance. And so, while some of the medium and long-term needs are maybe more in scope with the size and the age of the building, there's some more pressing financial implications for a building like the library. And we think that's sort of illustrative of the other facilities that are in that mix. In the end-of-useful-life category, we have our oldest, sometimes largest, sometimes most complicated buildings. And a particular example is the building next door, City Hall. It's only a 5,300-square-foot building, but you can see over the next 20 years, it needs nearly $1 million of investment. It was built in 1940. So, one of the things that I think is important to note, and I'll get to it again as I wrap up the presentation, is that the end-of-useful-life conversation doesn't just mean we're not going to make an investment. We're not going to keep the building. I'm actually going to talk specifically about some of the things I think we're going to need to do over the next couple of years to make those decisions. But knowing that there are older facilities that haven't had a lot of money spent on them over a long period of time, those buildings will have different needs. And there's sort of a different calculus that we have in mind as we're making decisions about services and deploying services. A number of the future steps that we need to take are included on this slide. We need to evaluate the preventive maintenance program. It was just provided to us today. We haven't looked at it. We know it's draft. We think the picture on the cover might be the Corvallis City Hall, but we're not sure about that. So, it's draft and the water and light facilities are all mixed in together. So, we need to take a serious look at that preventive maintenance plan, create a final draft, really evaluate what we're going to do in terms of our preventive maintenance. I think we need to invest in Phase One of a building master plan and feasibility study. And you'll see a proposal in the budget that comes to you for your review and approval in May and June. Phase One is a thoughtful assessment of the facilities that we have, how we deploy our services, what our footprint is. We have what I refer to as a constellation of facilities around the community. And that's not a bad thing. But we also have a lot of single and two-story uses that are sort of diffuse around the community and particularly in the downtown. Our footprint downtown is fairly significant. We hear a lot of conversation about the county's footprint. And I'm not picking on the county. It's just there are partners in this as well. And I've had at least a couple of meetings with representatives of Yamhill County about their facilities' needs and their footprint. Our footprint hasn't changed very much in the last decade or so. I think the police department was the last significant acquisition, other than parks and open space. But in terms of built facilities, our footprint's been pretty stable for a decade or so. The county's footprint has grown a lot in that 10 years. But we still have a significant footprint. And we have a bunch of what I call single-story uses. And I understand the irony of saying that when I sit in a second-story building. But we've got a bunch of one- and two-story buildings kind of scattered primarily around the downtown area, but not entirely. I think part of the conversation we need to have is is that the effective and efficient and appropriate way to deliver services in our community? Or should we be talking about more consolidated utilization of facilities? I think the county will have a similar series of conversations. We're a little bit ahead of them in terms of where we are with our building assessment. They're going to go through a similar program this year that we have been through for the last year. But they're also in tune with their footprint and how hard it is to maintain all the buildings they have and how they now have sort of a diffuse set of services around the downtown. So, in my mind, the conversation the county has is not about moving the county out of downtown. It's not about moving the city out of downtown. In fact, I think that's a huge mistake to contemplate in large scale. Civic presence is crucial to a fantastic downtown. And that's something that we have. The question is, do you have it deployed with the right footprint? Or are you spread out too much? Are you really doing a good job of efficiently and affecting, effectively delivering services where they're needed, where they're accessible? That sort of thing. So, that Phase One building master plan really starts to look at some of those issues. And it's going to be informed by the facilities' needs assessment, not just by the stuff in the red balloon, but in the stuff in all of the balloons. We also want to take a look at options for a centralized facilities maintenance program. The mayor can't answer this question because he knows it. Does anybody know who the facilities manager is for this building right here? It's me. Does anybody need my wife to come testify about what a bad match that is for my particular skillset and life experience? Jenny is the facilities manager for the library. We don't have a centralized facilities management function. That's something that we need to seriously take a look at. Because what happens is we have 10 different people in charge of 10 different facilities. And while some of us are better at this sort of thing than others, none of us were actually trained and educated and desire to be facilities managers. One of the things that we'll be talking about is the possibility of working with Yamhill County. Yamhill County has a centralized facility maintenance program. They do a pretty good job of maintaining their facilities. And they have a much bigger footprint than we do, obviously, not just in town, but across the county. And so, we've already met with them to talk to them about what our needs are and whether they may be able to serve those needs through a partnership. We want to budget resources to fund some of the immediate improvement needs that we've identified. And you'll see those proposed in the budget. Not forgetting what the other significant capital needs are, we want to explore what options we may have for a centralized fleet and equipment program. And because we've got infrastructure above and beyond buildings, we need to make sure that we update our infrastructure master plans as needed. So, that gets us back to how that whole graphic sort of hangs together. For the executive team's purposes, this made sense to us. This was a sort of an easy graphic way to capture a lot of complicated moving parts and their relationships with one another. We're certainly interested in your feedback about whether you think this graphic makes sense, whether it needs more information, different information. And at this point, I want to just move on to any questions or observations that you have. Again, the purpose of tonight's meeting was to really share with you the high-level findings of this building assessment to identify what we think some of our pressing needs are and to chart a path forward in some thoughtful ways. And any questions you have about any aspect of the presentation, I stand ready to answer. And most of the executive team is here and can chip in as needed.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's open it up to council for questions or observations.
Jeff, I had a question regarding the police department example you gave. It really accelerates after that three-year mark. And what makes it accelerate?
I didn't bring that report with me. The facilities manager isn't here. He's in Florida right now. So, the substitute facilities manager is here. And I'm not going to put Captain Simons on the spot. But when you get out to 10 or 20 years and the building's already 11 years old, it's probably, there's probably a significant roof repair in there. There's probably a significant upgrade, repair, replacement to some of the heating and air conditioning systems. So, it's going to be, you know, big systems in the building that drive costs like that, whether it's a roof or a heating system or significant investment. And we've got a lot of technology in that building. My guess is there's some projected end-of-life for some of the technology that's in the building as well.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm having some issues with my microphone. I was wondering if you could help me with that.
Yes, I can. I find that tossing it against the wall is not as effective as bouncing it on the floor.
It keeps falling down, and you know I like to have it close up here. I'll try the throwing it after I ask my questions. In the individual reports, when will we be seeing those?
When would you like to see them? There's a boatload of information there. We can provide some summary information for you. There's a lot of repetitive information because every report can be read on its own. So, the, you know, description and definitions and scope of work and executive summary about what goes into the report, you know, there's probably two or three pages that are the same for every report. There's also a bunch of photos in the report. There are tables. I actually think the preventive maintenance program, once we assess that and get it into a final draft form, would be useful for you. But, you know, the kind of information you want, it's all out there. We can provide those copies to you. We could give you each a different report for you to take a look at and see if it's the kind of information you'd like to see for a bunch of things. You know, do you really want to know about the Cozine Creek pump station? Or are you really just interested in the community center? I mean, there's, we can slice and dice the information however you'd like us to.
So, would that be, I mean, currently is the information summarized to a degree for each, for each building by the company that did the reporting?
Yes. So, there's a table for each piece of each site in each report. And it's kind of a partial page. So, in the report that describes this property here, there are four graphs, one for this building, one for the garage, one for City Hall, one for the surface areas, the parking lot and the sidewalk. And then, there's a combined table that rolls all that information together.
Okay. I mean, I think it would be great to have it not, understanding that, you know, truthfully, won't probably, it sounds like it's probably hundreds and hundreds of pages.
It is hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Maybe I wouldn't be able to go through it with a fine-tooth comb, but it'd be, I would appreciate having it to be looked over. So, then, does it include the zoning for each of the buildings?
I don't think we got to land use. But that would be pretty easy for us to do. We already have, particularly in the downtown area, we already have a map of all the city and county-owned property designated. And we've, it would be easy to do a zoning or a land use layer on top of a map like that.
Okay, I would be interested in the zoning on it.
I think we can come up with that. Most of them are going to be zoned public facilities. At least, that's the theory. Because they're public facilities.
The surrounding area, I guess.
The surrounding areas would also be identified, yes.
And then, when you were talking about the buildings that are kind of at, what did you say, end-of-life?
Nothing is designated as actual end-of-life. But when you look at the investments that are required over, you know, five, 10, 20 years, I think it's, I mean, I think it's legitimate to ask the question, should we be investing $2 million in City Hall in the next 20 years? Should we be investing $750,000 into the Chamber Office Building over the next 20 years? One of my other favorite poster children, if you will, for this exercise is the fire station, which outwardly looks like a nice building, and it's been well-kept. But it's an older facility. We assessed the seismic needs of that building because that's a building that needs to function after a shake. It can't just fall down. The cost of bringing that building up to current seismic upgrades and addressing all of the 20-year needs in the condition assessment are about 2 and 1/2 times the cost of building a brand-new station from the ground up. And so, it's that, those kinds of assessments that we'll need to do for all of these facilities. And that doesn't mean we walk away from the fire station. But you've heard a number of reports from the fire chief about the challenges of that building and the location of that building. And then, when you couple it with these significant cost impacts, it really drives the conversation about, okay, what, you know, what's the best use of the, of the public resources when it comes to providing that particular service?
That's all I have for now. Because you're going to keep going, right?
I don't have to. No, this is the question part.
I know. Sometimes you have questions in the middle.
Oh, no, no. I don't have questions in the middle.
Oh, no.
Not tonight.
Okay. When are you coming back with more? Other than the electronic or whatever doc?
So, that's part of what I'd like to hear from you. We'll definitely be talking about this larger issue in the context of the budget that comes to you in late April, early May? Early May? I just made, I said, I said, well, the meeting will be in mid-May, but they'll have it in their hands sooner than that. When I said April, I got Marcia's attention. So, there'll be, some of this stuff will be addressed in the budget presentation. So, we'll definitely be talking about it as part of the overall city budget. One of the things that might be useful is we can share some examples of reports with the council. We can do some additional work on summary information and then get some feedback from you on which path you'd like to go down in terms of, do you want to look at all the buildings at once? Do you want to look at just a certain cadre of buildings? Do you want us to come up with, you know, we could come up with different plans for each of the colored balloons kind of thing? So, getting some initial feedback from you and having this be sort of an iterative administration and policy process would work. We certainly could schedule additional work session time later this spring. This is a multi-year conversation, quite frankly. And if you just put it in the context of the sheer dollar amount, that unmet need for general fund occupied facilities is about 175% of the transportation bond that was passed a few years ago. That was a $24 million issue, I think. And we're looking at a $34 million unmet need for a general fund facilities. And that was a three-year conversation from beginning to a voter-approved measure and then another three-plus years to make all the improvements. So, this is a long-term conversation in the community and with this body.
Well, the feedback that I hear a lot just in talking to people corresponds to what you were starting to talk about with your single-story-use buildings is that there's wonder as to why there is so much wrapped up in small houses around town. So, I'm certainly interested in pursuing that aspect of it.
I think that Phase One study that I described on the two slides before this one.
And you indicated that'd be, to us, probably in July, June, July?
What's that?
That Phase One?
No, we've built money into the budget for next fiscal year to do that work.
Okay, to do that work, okay.
So, when you move your office to the old fire department, are you going to have the pole on yours?
No, I don't want to go in. I don't want, don't make me go in there.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I think I'd be interested in reading the whole report.
All 24 of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, just send it out electronically, maybe, and then, we can.
We probably won't send it out electronically. It's massive. We'll figure out a way to get that information to you. My guess is we'll do, we might do, Scott in the building? Dropbox or an FTP site or something like that?
I have no idea what that means, but okay.
To it electronically.
Okay.
I don't want to kill all the trees it would take to produce seven versions of that.
However you want to do that.
The pie chart you show, condition assessment of city-owned buildings, is that, is that a percentage of those 54 buildings that get categorized as one of those categories? Or is that a dollar figure?
So, of 100% of the improvements that are identified in the, in the reports, that's the percentage that are related to life cycle, the percentage that are related to safety, the percentage that are related to, so each of those planned types, each of those categories. So, of a great big number, 75% are related to.
So, each facility gets multiple dings?
Oh, sure. Some facilities, you know, some of our newer facilities, for instance, it's all about life-cycle investment. You just have to make preventive maintenance investments and go do it. And some of our facilities, there are significant performance issues that need to be addressed. There are a couple of smaller facilities that have some safety impacts that we need to deal with. So, each of the, each of the reports has a little graphic. It's, I call it the donut, or maybe we'll call it a bagel. There's a bagel with colored slices in it. And it'll, it describes the percentage of investment that's required over 20 years in each of those categories.
Do they dive into their calculus on those yearly assessments?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, it's project-specific. It gets down to, we think the electrical improvements are going to cost you this much, and you got to do it in this particular year.
And then, does the report take into, you touched on the, the time loss of management in running their facility as opposed to running, does that take that?
This is just an assessment of the buildings and the facilities themselves. It doesn't get into the service-level impact. It doesn't address the impacts of having a decentralized facilities maintenance function. There's none of that. It's just about the physical structure.
And sorry, it does cover fleets or it does not cover fleets?
It does not cover fleet. We identified, we identified fleet and equipment because those, there are big capital needs there as well. We just assessed the built facilities.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, thanks. I had a couple of, well, I guess mine might not be questions that you'll answer right now, but to give you some guidance about some of the things that I wonder in this that whet our appetite about what it contains. I had questions about how, what the thinking was that put them into those separate balloons. Like, you gave us one example of that building, but I would be interested in seeing in numbers what bumps a building up into that category of end-of-useful-life? And what are your options with regards to that? Like, how quickly does it then become? You're just throwing your money away to maintain it? You know, like, those types of questions come into my mind You know, like, those types of questions come into my mind with regards to what, you know, what we need to do.
And in fact, as you look through the reports, there's actually a graph for each facility that shows that Facility Condition Index, the FCI, and it shows what happens to that line as you either make investments or don't make investments. So, so even though we may not have a building at the end of its useful life, if you don't spend the money now, three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years, you see what, how quickly you can approach, or how slowly you can approach the end of useful life for a facility. So, that, that information is in each individual report.
That would be really interesting to see, so we can kind of get our heads wrapped around, well, what does that mean specifically? And how quickly does action need to be taken? You know, because we are currently using those buildings. So, that was one of the questions that I had. And then, the other thing, I, I really liked how you gave those examples, that you gave the numbers. If we had data like that for all of the different facilities to be able to see comparatively, I mean, that would be really helpful. And then there was one other thing that I had a question about, but I forget right now. So, go on to Adam. I'm sure I'll remember in just a second.
Adam?
I'm definitely looking forward to Phase 1, when that comes together, like Remy and Zach. I would like to look at the full report. I'm definitely not going to go through it with a fine-toothed comb, but I'd like to be able to jump around and dive into buildings that pique my interest. Outside of the aging fire station, is there any other buildings in this report that needs seismic upgrades to, just because of their use?
So, we didn't, so we, let me try to remember which ones. We did a seismic assessment at the wastewater, the water reclamation facility. We did a separate, a separate seismic assessment from this process for the fire station.
There's the airport building as well, but I wasn't sure if that...
Did we look at the airport too, Mike? There were, there were maybe three or four buildings that we tacked on a seismic assessment during this work effort. We didn't for the police department or for this building, because they have been built since the codes changed and they're built to current earthquake codes. We didn't assess the library, because there were some fairly significant seismic improvements made to the library about 10 years or so ago. A number of our older buildings, we didn't assess, because we felt like the numbers were going to be big enough without that assessment, that we would probably be faced with a serious conversation about what investment we needed to make in the building before we did any seismic review. So, for most of the buildings, we did not do a seismic assessment. Mike, was there something more that we did include?
We did the community center, because it has a lot of the IS technical infrastructure for the city. We did wastewater services, because it's a alternate emergency operations center. And we did Oregon State Police, because of its critical functionality. But those are the only three that we did. The high-level seismic work, there wasn't any actual detailed engineering or detailed seismic studies done. It sets out the high-level condition of those facilities and then recommends that you go to a more detailed seismic analysis if you're interested in making upgrades related to seismic.
Outside of the Chamber Commerce Building, is there any other buildings in this report that are leased? Or at the airport, the OSP building as well?
Yeah, so the, so the building, Oregon State Police, what about the Riverside House?
Yeah, so wastewater services owns a single-family residence off of Riverside Drive. So, we did a condition assessment of that. We also did a condition assessment of city-owned hangars that are leased to tenants. So, I think that was it from a lease standpoint.
I think that's all.
Cozine House, is that?
That's not ours.
The Cozine House is owned by the Downtown Association.
In that Phase 1 master plan and feasibility, will that kind of look at the value of, say, the chamber building and if we were to...
Yeah, we haven't written the scope for that study yet, but we can, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Wendy, did your question come back?
I think, maybe one of the reasons I forgot was because it wasn't really well-formed, but I guess the thing, the thing that's a little asterisk by this, but I guess the thing, there are so many moving parts, and I know that we're all feeling like we need to really understand the, those parts in relation to how we're making decisions now and into the future. One of the things Mike and I talked about when I first came on was how if you don't do maintenance now, then all of a sudden gets, the roads will get beyond a point where it then becomes way more expensive, like you were talking about.
Right.
So, understanding that for all of these buildings and how we prioritize within the bounds of, you know, our, the realities that we're faced with. So, I think I would be in support of seeing the whole plan just to be able to internalize, go through, not read all word-for-word probably, but internalize, like, the big picture of the information that we're, we've been given, so that we are prepared with kind of that background information to be able to make those decisions. And it was helpful, like I said, also to have, like, kind of a condensed, like, how, how it came about, that we, these different categorizations were made, and whatever processes you're going to go through to make it digestible for us will be helpful as well. So, I guess that was my high level of what, you know, I was feeling with regards to this data. There's a lot of data to internalize, but I think that we, it would be helpful for us to have that background information.
Yeah, there's an old African proverb about how to eat an elephant, and it's one bite at a time. So, you know, figuring out how to get you the information and how to share the information in the community in a way that folks can really process it and think about it and move to some conclusions is, is going to be really important.
Yeah.
From my perspective, I appreciate just the, when you're taking a look at the facility condition assessment and how you've broken those into the three pieces gives us a, a sense of what that is. You know, when we're looking out 20 years, in that Mack Water and Light has done the same study, and in no way do they have the extensiveness of what we've got here at the city. It's much easier to take a look at what's happening there. And they have somewhat, some newer buildings, but you got to remember, we're going to have roofs on every building, you know, in 20 years. We could have windows in every building that we'd need to be taking a look at, carpet and some of those things. That really puts that number up, but that's typical operations that we're going to have. I think the big thing that's going to, that we're going to really need to take a strong look, and as Adam says, when we get that Phase 1 assessment, that's going to be very helpful to us, but is just to take a look at the safety areas, the retrofitting, those things that become much more functional for us. And, and we're just going to have to weigh those out, I'm guessing, as we're taking a look at that. My, my sense is we've got a lot of data, but as we sit around the room, department heads know the functionality of your buildings better than anyone. And I think that's where we're going to, going through that Phase 1, get a sense of what's going on. Until we get to a point where there's a policy question of where we go and what we do, that's where we need to come in and be cognizant of this. So, you know, I, I would say when we start seeing some direction from our department heads in the building of that Phase 1, we might have another work session, Jeff, and just bring us up to speed. If we could park electronically the data someplace where we could go in at our leisure and just take a look at us. Some would want to do that, others don't, but it gives us an opportunity to, to delve. I mean, I look around the room, and we've got a few people that have some building background and, and understand that piece very well and could be very helpful from that perspective. So, I, I know this is just the start of something that's going to be much, much bigger. I, I also enjoy a little bit of looking at, I think it was the, the statement of how we could, how we could possibly utilize in our equipment and some of our facilities there. Because I think we could maybe at some point partner up with other entities out there. I, I know, like, the county now has their big new garage and maintenance building, Mack Water and Light, at some point, we've been talking about a combined, well, them building a fueling station that the city could possibly participate in that. We have our, our maintenance area that butts right up to Mack Water and Light's area. So, I think there's some opportunities to look more strategically and, and pooling some dollars maybe in some of those areas, too. But again, I look at the experts, and the experts sit around this table and will give us some insights from that perspective. Go ahead.
Sorry to...
No.
...come back in. This isn't necessarily specific to this report, but is more about a kind of functional issue of, of addressing this and, and, pardon me if the question sounds naive, but I'd rather ask it than not. So, when you get a report like this with, say, the fire department, and we've been hearing for years, the fire department has significant needs for improvement, and then you have this report come in, and it's such a crucial element to, to the functioning of the city daily, let alone in, in the wake, wake of a disaster. Why, or, and not without realizing that everything has to be evaluated and you have to take specific steps, but, but why, why when there's so much kind of overwhelming information for one facility and one facility that's so crucial, and I suppose you could argue any facility was crucial, but, but a facility like that, why put it through a year, a year and a half, or two years of strategic planning instead of, you know, you've just said it would cost less to build a new fire department than it would to bring this one up to where it needs to be over a short term? Why not just start that process of, okay, well, we know, you know, we know what our next steps would be for building a new fire department? So, even without knowing exactly every element of it, what, what would stop us from just pursuing that one piece while the rest is still in planning?
It's not a naive question at all. And in fact, I'm not going to suggest that we're going to put all 54 facilities through the exact same process, because they have different needs. There's at least three different clear paths to me, because each of those colored bubbles call for a different solution set. And even inside those colored bubbles, there may be individual structure. It was always, wait a minute, we're not going to actually go down this path with this building because, and the, I think the fire department is a good example of that. You know, if we know it costs two and a half times to fix the building we have than to build a building, if we know that, we wouldn't build a new building where the current building is. If we know we're having active conversations with other regional partners about a different model of providing fire and EMS service, does it actually make sense to put that building through that other process? I mean, I think you made the argument that, no. And my, my proposal wasn't, we're going to treat every building the same. In fact, our next step at the staff level is to really decide, okay, when, when we do this larger, multi-facility master plan, if you will, which buildings really need to be in that, which should be in that, and which need to be on their own path? Whether that path is, hey, we just need to slap a coat of paint on it and replace the carbon in five years versus there's a, you know, crying need to address this critical facility in a different method. So, we'll, we'll go through that assessment and we'll bring that information to you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more follow-up question? It's more of a history question than a question about this current report. Did we have an, an assessment done like this in the, in any recent or past history?
Doubt it. We turn to the guy who's been here the longest.
Mike, I think that goes by phone you.
Mike looks for who we're looking at.
So, Mike, do, how were we making these decisions previous to this? About how to prioritize the maintenance and the decision-making like this?
I, I think every department head that's been in charge of a facility over the past two or three decades probably had a different approach to that. There wasn't, this is the first sort of collective body of information that gives you an idea, sort of from a system standpoint, where the needs are. And it really just becomes a baseline for us to start to make priority decisions and to try to be a little bit better about making choices about what you do. But, you know, as an example, for me, the last couple months, I've been sending project managers to get quotes to clean gutters and remove ivy and talk about repainting a parking lot. And you just do what you know needs to be done, and you do what you can afford within the budget you have. So, and I think each department head would tell you the same thing. Jenny's had some significant struggles over the past few years with HVAC equipment and elevators and things like that. And Susan has some interesting stories about discoveries she's made at the community center and the aquatic center. So, we have managed the best we could with the knowledge we had at the time, and certainly this effort has been quite informative to give us a better baseline level of knowledge for what we have.
So, paying, just pay, the department heads that are responsible for the facilities have been paying attention to the facilities as best they can within their, and putting it on their regular budget requests. Okay, that, that makes sense. And thank you very much for, for wading through, well, first of all, collecting all the information. I think this is a great approach for us to be able to look at the priority, priorities that we'll need to be, need to be making with regards to how we budget our money and moving forward, so we can be as strategic as possible over the whole of our investments and capital equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, so, any further discussion or questions for Jeff from the DIAS? Seeing none. I'm just going to turn to department heads. Anything you'd like to share from your perspective with us in this discussion? I mean, we're all a team as we're working and looking at this.
Where's the best place to buy a bucket, Susan?
We do currently have sandbags and buckets in the basement of the community center. The only thing I would add from my perspective, being new in the last couple of years, in this year's current budget cycle, we asked for and were allocated $75,000 for a Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan. So, it's a sort of that model that Jeff talked about for all of the buildings. We just signed a contract with a consultant for that. So, that's something that we'll look at, funding potential, planning potential for the next 30 years for recreation needs, and we'll build off of these condition assessments.
The one thing that I do have access to, that it's not in the reports that would be available, is the seismic study that was done on the fire station. I can give that to Mr. Tower to make sure that's included, so you have it available through your electronic means.
Jeff, any, anything further you need from us as a council?
No, I appreciate your attention. Great questions. I, you know, I have follow-up conversations with our colleagues who aren't able to be here tonight.
Okay. Well, we'll then just look for this to come back to us at a later date, and we'll probably have a discussion along the way. So, with that being, taking care of that discussion, our work session, we'll go ahead and close, and then we'll reconvene at 7:00 for our regularly scheduled council meeting.
People get set for the opening of our. Lisa, are we all set? Okay, I am going to call to order the city council of on Tuesday, March 26, 2019, and I will call us to order. And Zach, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Got it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zach. This takes us to an invitation for citizens for public comment. We have the cards in the back. I don't know if we've received any, but I'll go ahead and just anyone that would like to speak to the council this evening on may speak on any topic other than a matter matters in litigation, quasi judicial land use matters, or matters scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We limit these comments to three minutes, so anyone that would like to address the council this evening? I don't see any, so that'll take us to our advice and information items this evening, reports from councillors on committee assignments. And so, Adam, I'll start with you and we'll work to my right.
YCOM, we're looking to get into the budget cycle and still exploring options with bringing Dundee on and how that plugs into the system. Timing wise on that, we're gonna wait till after fire season, it looks like. If they were to come onboard, it would be probably around Jan. 1, which would be in the middle of our fiscal year, but work best with the workload. Probably gonna add another dispatcher and revenue wise, it looks like there's a bill in the legislature to increase our funding mechanism through a 911 tax on our cell on our phone bills, whether that's a cellphone, landline, whatever, so that should offset some rising costs that we see with personnel and healthcare. Other than that, we haven't had an airport commission meeting. I think we're still just working on getting that tank refurbished out there.
Thank you, Adam. Wendy?
I have nothing to report, but our meetings are coming up. Sorry. I have nothing to report, but our meetings are coming up the first week or Murak coming up the first week of April, so Wednesday, every Wednesday at four. And then we do have our second streetscape meeting for a third on the fifth.
Thank you. Remy?
So the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force will meet tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and we're going to be looking at three different things. One, we're going to be reviewing our action plan so we can start to develop our next steps. And we're also going to be reviewing the work that's being done by one of our subcommittees working on a floating zone, RFP, and we'll be receiving a legislative update. That's an hour long meeting. In our housing for homeless subcommittee, there is a reminder right now that YCAP is accepting interested parties for their safe shelter program. This is a program that pairs host families with children aged 11 through 17 who are homeless. And the it's a they're short term stays that are up to 21 days and there are program managers that are available through YCAP. Currently, there are approximately nine host families in Yamhill County with two in McMinnville, and so even one additional house would really make a difference. As we we know, we have 98 unaccompanied youth in Yamhill County. That's from the point in time counts, that number's probably a little low. We have over 400 children under the age of 18 in Yamhill County. That number may also be a little low because a number that we know definitively is that in our McMinnville school system, K through eight, we have 230 homeless students. So even one additional family, if anybody in our community is interested in participating in that YCAP program, it would be great. And then earlier this week, City Manager Towery, Planning Director Richards, and myself were invited to meet with Suzanne Bonamici for a listening session. In addition, the President of Austin Industries was there, YCAP City and County Planning, some some of the members from our faith-based community, Health and Human Services, Mr. Mayor, and the Newburgh Mayor as well, and the Newburgh City Manager as well. There was representation from county commissioners and some nonprofits that serve those communities. And I have about three pages of notes on them, which of course I can't share in my three minutes here, but I will tell you that she basically asked two questions of the group. One was for an accurate reflection on where individual communities are now, and then two was what what could be done at the federal level to help us work towards ending homelessness and and provide more affordable housing, including workforce housing. And then she shared a little bit of information with us. And one small soundbite takeaway that I thought was really interesting is that for our area, if you're a minimum wage earner and based on the average price of a of a one bedroom apartment, if you were to be spending approximately 30% of your income on that, you'd be working about 65 hours a week on that at that minimum wage job, and that an actual housing wage for our area, so that would be housing wage would be considered the wage at which you would be able to work a 40-hour work week and and afford that same thing would be $21.77 an hour. And then she gave us a number of updates on things that are happening at the federal level and some things that are being worked on, like the Ending Homelessness Act, trying to get funding again for VAWO, which is the Violence Against Women Act, which is how a lot of funding comes to our domestic abuse shelters, which is very important, especially for the city of McMinnville where domestic abuse is the second leading cause of homelessness. I could go on, but I think my time's probably up, so thank you.
But very good meeting, and I think she listened very intently, and we had all the right people around the room, so. Zach?
Nothing major to report on Historic Landmark Committee, Landscape Committee, or McMinnville Community Media, other than Friday, April 26, Arbor Day. That's it.
And I'll just make a couple of reports. Kelly Kelly's on vacation this evening and has been, and Jeff was back at a convention last week, so I had an opportunity to be a part of Visit McMinnville, and we reviewed their financials. We talked about the first draft of their 2020 budget preparations, had a great discussion. The poor forma is working well for the group, very very in line with where they need to be going. We had a discussion with Senate Bill 595 and had some overview and updates on that and the effect that that might have. Marketing reports, as we go over every month, showed some great earned media. We had an opportunity to look at a new media piece that's going to be coming out, looked at our social media. Again, we talked about the campaign plans and an update with a real focus in the Seattle market. We talked about group sales. Our Strategic Board Planning Day is April 10. We looked at the industry with Willamette Valley Wine Growers and and the Oregon Wine Group, Visit Newburgh is starting their DMO, and we've been helpful there. Had a discussion about a granary district meeting. The discussions have been happening on the Three Mile Lane Committee and an update on cycling on BLM land outside of town. So great meeting, as always. Just a couple of things. Had an opportunity on last Thursday, Dave Holkerberg, myself, and our our consultants went and had an opportunity to meet with Representative Noble and Senator Boquist, and we updated them on our Washington DC trip and and debriefed Senator Boquist on that. And he gave us some marching orders. We talked a little bit about the availability of Oregon funds, a lot in transportation are in the mix, so we had a great conversation. Yesterday, had an opportunity to testify on House Bill 2797, which is the Inclusionary Zone, and that was a very, a very good hearing that we had. I can tell you that this Inclusionary Zone is primarily a pilot for McMinnville because it's only for cities between the populations of 30 and 37,000. And and there's two cities that fall in that category, McMinnville and Oregon City, but the county has to be between 102 and 175, so we're the only city there. So we had a very, very good discussion with the committee yesterday. We we were very specific. This is a pilot, and it's a controlled pilot to see if this is something that might be rolled out at a later date statewide, but because of its narrowness in in scope and that we have the capacity to run the pilot, I think that may be coming our way. That's the sense that I received from those from those discussions. While I'm while I still have the mic, my understanding is somebody on the dais has a birthday today, and so, Mr. Jeff, we wish you a happy birthday. I wonder what it's like to be 39 and looking young like you are, so. But happy birthday. I hear I hear they treated you well in your office today and maybe did a little decoration, so we 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 send those best wishes to you. Let's go around to departments. Tim?
I don't have anything to add, Mr. Mayor, except for happy birthday.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, just an update on the AMITI work that we've been doing. We had a couple of open houses, one in Perridale, one at the AMITI Fire Station a weekend and a half ago. April 4, we'll be having a work session to lay some goals and groundwork for the first year contract. On April 16, we'll be going to the board for contract approval for the AMITI board. Everything's successful. We'll have it on the agenda for city council on the 23rd.
Thank you, Chief. Marsha? Melissa?
I have a question for. Did we hire a new wastewater director?
So we did complete the recruitment for wastewater manager and internal candidate Leland Kester, who was our WRF and pump station operations superintendent, has been promoted to wastewater manager.
Fantastic.
We're working with Kylie on a recruitment for his.
The operations superintendent, then?
His former position.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you for the update. Melissa? David? And Jeff? I think you've heard quite enough from me. Okay. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. We have two items on the consent agenda. Consider a request from Elias Walters Wine Company LLC for an LOCC license winery first location located at 455 Northeast Irvine Street, and consider a request from A&amp;D Wine Company for an OLCC wine license winery first location located at 1065 Northeast Alpine Avenue. Are there any councillors that would like to have anything taken off the consent agenda?
I don't want to have anything taken off, but can I ask a question?
Sure.
For the city manager? So why are these coming back before us? Again, I mean, we've seen a lot of new liquor license, but for instance, the A&amp;D, that's an existing facility, they're already licensed as far as I know, so was there some why are these coming back before us? I feel like I especially should know.
Can you help us with that?
This is a change in in ownership for A&amp;D, so that since it was a change in ownership, they had to reapply. That's my understanding anyways.
Okay.
Okay. So again, anyone would like to remove anything off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Remy and seconded by Zach. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously, one, two, three, four, two, zero, this evening. Thank you. That takes us to our resolutions this evening, and we're going to consider Resolution 2019-19, a resolution awarding a contract for the BioSolids Application Project, Project 2019-1. And so Mike will turn that over for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report in your packet from project manager Larry Sherwood that outlines the bid results for this annual contract for BioSolids hauling and application. As you may know, the water reclamation facility generates Class A bio solid product, which is exceptional level product based on our treatment processes, and given that classification of product, we don't have further application or regulation, application regulations from DEQ. And so we haul approximately four and a half million gallons of that product annually and apply it to farm fields in the area. And so Tribeca is the lowest responsible bidder in your packet. They've had the contract since 2013, and so this will be their third renewal of that three year contract. So unless there are any questions, I would recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented in your packet.
Thank you, Mike. And as Mike indicated, this is something that we do annually, so any any questions for Mike or discussion among the council?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
Mike, what's the demand among the farmers for this product? Is it hard for us to get rid of, or is there a waiting list for application, or?
Well, that some of that is seasonal, and it depends on the farmer. A lot of them are rotating crops, and so the BioSolids might work on a grass seed crop and not work on their next crop, but it's a very well received product within the area, and we do have an active list of folks that will take the product if we have it. It's not difficult for us to distribute and apply the BioSolid product.
With the rising costs, is there a marketability to the product that we could recoup some of that cost, either within our current list of farmers, or if you look at other municipalities and what they do with their wastewater solids, if they meet the same classification?
That's a good question. Certainly, as we continue to grow as a community, our ability to generate this liquid applied product will become limited by capacity, and we've actually have in our wastewater master plan the need to evaluate expansion of the solids handling process, perhaps to a solid dried product, at which point is a little more marketable. But to my knowledge, there's not been an effort to look at trying to sell the product to farmers. It's been sort of a symbiotic relationship. It's it's good for us to distribute four and a half million gallons of the product, and it certainly is a benefit to the farmers that receive the product. But and in context, there is a cost increase this year, but in $10 million operating budget, it's a fairly insignificant cost increase and doesn't have an impact on the utility structure or utility rates.
Gotcha. I guess just moving forward, I would like to. I guess just moving forward, I would like to explore those options. I don't know how other councilors feel about that, but just with, I think any dollar matters in our budget, even though it is a very small, you know, amount in that operating budget, I'd still like to recapture that if possible. Maybe not 100 percent cost recovery, but if we just captured our increases when contracts came up, I would definitely like to explore that. And if, you know, we don't have capacity to store additional, and we need to make sure we get rid of it every year, I totally understand that as well. There's only so big of a tank out there to store our classifications, but I just think regardless, the farmer needs to get nitrogen into his soil, so if he's not getting free product from us, he's buying it from OVS or Simplot or Marion Ag, so, you know, we should be able to recover something.
Thank you, Adam. Any further discussions or questions?
In addition to echoing Adam's interest in finding some sort of equitability in that, how far out does it travel? What's the farthest-reaching farm that this waste will hit?
I'd have to get that information for you, Zach. I do know that, you know, we set the bid price up so that there's a cost for hauling within a 10-mile radius, and then a cost for greater than 10 to 25, so my assumption is we're within a 25-mile radius, so. But specifically, how far the farthest farm, I'd have to look that up for you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will then ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-19.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second. Oh, jeez.
It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. This Resolution 2019-19 passes unanimously 4 to 0. That takes us to our next resolution, 2019-20, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and making supplemental appropriations. And so we'll call on Marcia to make that presentation. Marcia?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I would refer you to the staff report in your packet. Resolution 2019-20 proposes a supplemental budget for the general fund fire department and the ambulance fund. This supplemental budget is necessary due to personnel costs and equipment costs that were incurred when our city firefighters responded to wildfire conflagrations in Oregon and California in July and August of 2018, and then also to the Hurricane Michael emergency in Florida in October of 2018. So this resolution increases the intergovernmental revenue for the reimbursements that will be received and also increases appropriations for the unanticipated costs incurred. The city will receive a total reimbursements of $275,315, and the staff report has a table that shows down in more detail. In the general fund fire department, intergovernmental revenues for the reimbursements are increased to $186,420, and appropriations are increased by the same amount, with personal services increased by $112,937 and materials and services by $73,483. And then in the ambulance fund, revenues and personnel services appropriations are increased by a total of $88,895. And I would defer any other questions to Chief Leifert.
So any questions or discussions? I kind of see this almost as a housekeeping to do this, but the one thing I would like to share is that Damon Schultz had an opportunity to go to Hurricane Michael and represent us there, and I had an opportunity at her last county emergency management meeting. Damon made a report along with the emergency management personnel from the Portland Fire Department, and they both gave great rundown of what happened during that hurricane, but more importantly, how we are going -- how we could be much better prepared for disaster. And Damon came back very enthused and much more knowledgeable, having gone through that. And so not only are we helping those that need help, and we're getting monies back from that, but it added to our intellectual and our experiential experience, I think, within the city. So I will, again, ask for any discussion, questions. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-20.
Still moved.
Second?
Been moved by Remy and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-20 passes unanimously 4 to 0. Again, if I didn't mention at the end of -- what was that? Oh. I love that. Baby blue. Councilor Manke, Council President Manke is on vacation, and Sal was sick today, so we excuse them, and we have our birthday boy, okay?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jeff. Happy birthday to you.
And with that rendition of happy birthday, I will close our meeting.